All right, good evening. And I'm Mayor Colleen Barnes. I want to thank each and every one of you that have come out this evening to have a conversation on affordable housing. It provokes a lot of different comments. It provokes a lot of different concerns. We have always tried to be very open and transparent about what affordable housing means and the obligations that have come down to us through the various court mandates. And this is just an extension of that, where we decided to have a public conversation on it, you know, ask questions. We'll kind of, you know, do a short presentation. It's being filmed for anyone that is wondering why. And then we're going to put it up on our public access television so people can see it. But first, I think we should all rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that you stand for one moment as we remember that today is September 11th. And 23 years ago, our country was attacked and thousands of people were murdered. And today is a day that we can never forget. But we need to mourn those who were murdered. And we need to listen to the families and to the loved ones who still look at today and say, this never gets easy. So for all of that, we should just take a moment of silence for those souls. Okay. Thank you for that. Please be seated. So we have a bit of a structure to this evening. And then we can get into some of the questions and answers. Tonight, most of our presentation will be led by our Borough Planner from T and M Associates. And Caroline Reiter is here. She has Tim Jensen, who is from her office. And Antonio Panagopoulos, who is our engineer. We also have our Planning Board Attorney, Diane DeVius, who also is our Affordable Housing Attorney. So she has a ton of background in this. Our Borough Administrator, Jesse Moment, if you have not met him, is here, as well as our Economic Development Point Person, Business Leader on this job. So we are here because we believe this is important. Right before I turn this over, I think that I'd just like to kind of give a little context. Affordable housing in New Jersey starts with a court ruling. And that court ruling was what they refer to as Mount Laurel. And that court ruling that came down from the Supreme Court ruled that each municipality has a constitutional obligation to provide a realistic opportunity for the construction of fair share, our fair share of affordable housing. So that is the premise of which this begins with. And then, and that is back in 1975. So we sit here today, 2024, and you're going to hear terminology that may be very foreign to you. And we can take our time and kind of go back because it's important to follow the trail of the affordable housing legal maze in and out of the courts, where it got stuck in the legislature, who then chose to not really fully address how towns should proceed in fulfilling those obligations. And then it gets moved back into the courts where we have been. So it has really been a difficult route that has been imposed on local municipalities. So you're going to hear first round of an obligation which came out of the original Mount Laurel decision that covered a period of time. You're going to hear terminology called a second round. And again, those are within actual years. And Caroline will touch a little bit on that, what those years are. You'll hear the Council of Affordable Housing, or COA, which is what the state, when the state really was into making sure the towns made their obligations realistic, they actually created an administrative place that we could go as mayors and planners to have conversations if we got stuck on something, if there was a place that we could actually go. Council of Affordable Housing, or COA. Through, I think, a varied myriad of reasons, some political, some changes of what was happening on, a ton of lawsuits, COA becomes defunct. Still not fully killed. It's still kind of a thing alive on paper, but has not really been supported by various administrations, Democrats and Republicans. And what happens is the town still needs guidance, still has responsibilities. And we end up where we have been, in the courts. And we have lived in the courts for, I don't know how many years at this point.
Since 2015.
Since 2015. Meaning that we used to have a place in Trenton through the DCA, Council of Affordable Housing, COA. That goes away through a myriad of things that we can't control. Supreme Court basically says, we still have the obligation. Doesn't matter if the administrative process in Trenton works or doesn't work. And so they push all municipalities into courts. They appoint special masters. We get into jurisdictions. And now we have judges who really set the standards, the numbers, and really give us little to no room for any sort of conversation, anything. And to my friends who are attorneys and planners, don't take this personal, but it's really the attorneys and planners that really did, has done really financially very well because we've had to, because we had to be in the courts. So now, we are, there's been very recent legislation. And I can say kind of proudly that I have been really in the forefront of this through the League of Municipalities with my co-chair on this topic, Mayor Janus Mirnov. And we really were there crafting and fighting and negotiating with both houses and the governor's office, with the League of Municipalities, with a lot of mayor's support, on trying to get out of the courts and get back into a process where we actually have a voice. And I would tell you, and we'll talk about this tonight, that this fourth round, we have a voice. We actually, there is a process that, and we'll get into this, of what the fourth round looks like to a certain degree, that we will be able to, there's a formula, we'll be getting a number. And we can say, well, maybe we don't agree about that number. And there will be, there's a mechanism in the legislation that we can have a conversation about that. So tonight, saying all of that and not taking any of your slide presentation away, but I felt it's important to kind of set the table, set expectations. And my hope is, is that when you leave here this evening, you will have a better understanding of what we grapple with here at the local level, where choice is really not something that we have. So with that, I'm going to ask Caroline to come up from T and M. We'll start the presentation. And then we'll move to some questions and answers.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor indicated, I'm Caroline Reiter. I'm the Planning Group Manager at T and M Associates. I've been working with Fanwood for almost my entire time at T and M, which is close to two years. Prior to my time at T and M, I was with another firm for over 20 years. And really, my career has been working with municipalities, just like Fanwood, on a variety of planning matters, including affordable housing. I think my first affordable housing plan was done, I can tell you exactly when it was done. I prepared it in 1999. And the only reason I remember, and a few people may appreciate this, is because I was pregnant with my son at the time. So I remember testifying while in that state. So as the mayor indicated, we are in what's called now the fourth round, or quickly approaching the fourth round of affordable housing, or a touch early, actually. The round three was supposed to extend through 2025, and it actually will. But with the new legislation that amends the State's Fair Housing Act, the process is starting early. And there are a lot of deadlines we're going to be discussing. They are coming quick and furious, fast and furious. And there's a whole process that we are already involved in. And as the mayor indicated, this setting is meant to be a public discussion for information so that everybody is on the same, has the opportunity to be on the same page and understand what is happening, why is the planning board doing certain things, why is the governing body doing certain things, and what our next steps are. So I'm going to sit down while I present and go through my slideshow. Antonio? There we go. That's our first bump in the road. So as the mayor indicated, new affordable housing legislation introduced in January of this year. There actually was a different bill introduced last December. It did not proceed through before the end of the year. There was a new bill introduced in January, passed both houses in March, very quickly signed by the governor. This legislation reforms municipal responsibilities regarding affordable housing. It abolishes the Council on Affordable Housing, or COA, which, as the mayor indicated, had not been active in a long time. The 2015 Mount Laurel Four decision that returned affordable housing back to the courts actually declared COA more abound. So it's maybe been there, but not really, since at least 2015 and probably earlier. There's also the establishment funding of a dispute resolution program, which I'm going to be discussing at the end. So this slide presents some, an overview of some key differences between the older rules that we used to follow and the new legislation. The first, the first item of interest is that there is a cap or a maximum on the number of senior or age-restricted affordable units. And that's been increased from 25 to 30%. There are a lot of bonus credit opportunities, which I'm going to be touching on later. However, one very important one, the rental bonus, is no longer available. Deadlines for municipalities through COA used to be individualized. They are now, and I will be getting to this, all statewide deadlines. The calculation of need was not, was previously, prospective need, which is basically your affordable housing obligation, was previously handled by COA. An obligation was assigned. Now, through the legislation, there is a formula. It follows what is known as the Jacobson Decision, which is a 2018 court case. And the legislation explains how the obligations are calculated. And we'll be getting to that. There is a dispute resolution mechanism within a new program being established within the legislation. Unmet need has more specific requirements. We'll be getting into that. And unmet need and the vacant land adjustment, they go hand in hand. And that's handled a little differently as well. This is an important slide, key dates, important dates. So first of all, I want to point out that the spacing between the dates is actually proportional to the time between the dates. It is not, it is not, it's not meant, it's not there, it's not that way to look attractive. It's because of the amount of time that we are going to have between very specific deadlines. So it starts in March, which of course is passed. That's when the legislation was adopted. Now, the next date is in orange. And it's actually pretty soon, September 16th. And the reason that date is shown in orange font is because that's not necessarily something for your governing body or your planning board. This is a reporting requirement for the town, which actually, your administrator and I have been, have had significant discussions about. There also was a June date, which has passed, so I removed it because that was another reporting deadline. The next big date is October 20th. This is a very important date. That is when DCA is set to release its municipal affordable housing obligation. So on October 20th, or by October 20th, DCA is scheduled to tell every town what is their round four affordable housing obligation. The next big date, and this is for your mayor council, your governing body, is January 31st, 2025. On that date, or by that date, excuse me, your governing body must adopt a binding resolution stating what its affordable housing obligation is. It can either be DCA's obligation that it was assigned. It can be another obligation with an explanation of why DCA's wasn't used. But it must be done by binding resolution of your governing body by January 31st. I want to point out that should that deadline not be met, the town may potentially, according to the legislation, lose its protection from exclusionary zoning litigation, AKA builders remedy lawsuits. That's an important date, January 31st. What happens pretty quickly after January 31st, however, is the dispute or challenge process, which the mayor alluded to. An interested party can challenge a municipality's obligation that is set forth in their binding resolution. And they have until February 28th to submit such a challenge. Let me take a step back. These are the dates as established by the legislation. We are all moving forward with the assumption these dates are going to be held and they're going to all come to fruition. So could any of this change in the future? That's a great question, and one that I typically get at these sessions. I don't know. But I'm proceeding as if these dates are set in stone and that's what we're moving forward. So if there is no challenge to a municipality's obligation by March 1st, that is their obligation. The next important date is for your planning board. By June 30th of 2025, your planning board must adopt a housing element and fair share plan. So what is that? What's a housing element? A housing element is one of the required components of a master plan. A housing element is required for a municipality to have the ability to zone. So the housing element will contain a lot of demographic information using the 2020 census. They are very required analyses that must be done. The fair share plan will go through and list your obligation and how the Borough of Fanwood is meeting its obligation. This is all contained within the housing element, fair share plan. And again, the deadline for adoption of this plan is June 30th, 2025. Should the plan not be adopted by June 30th, the municipality could once again lose its protection from exclusionary zoning litigation. So those two dates are very important. January 31st, governing body, mayor council, the binding resolution. June 30th, the housing element, which is adopted by the planning board. And just for some background, the housing element is not a document that we could therefore finish, let's say, June 29th with the thought of adopting it June 30th. This is a public document. It needs to be advertised. There needs to be available for the public to read 10 days in advance. You have to, you have to notify adjacent municipalities, your county planning board, as well as the State Office of Planning Advocacy. There is a process for this. So this is something that is, I would anticipate is going to be worked on very soon once we, once our obligation is provided to us. There is an opportunity after the housing element is adopted for there to be a challenge to the housing element, fair share plan. That needs to be done by August of next year. There is a time process for settling the challenge. And then finally, March of 2026, there is a time period by which everything must be done, including adoption of ordinances to implement your housing element, fair share plan, if that's necessary. So I'm just going to let this slide sit up here for another minute because this is very, very important, that these dates are, as of now, they're, thus far, nothing has been delayed and there have been no extensions. And I will tell you, that includes the September 16th deadline. And the September 16th deadline, and I'm smiling about it, although back at my office, you can ask my coworkers, I'm not smiling about it. But the September 16th deadline involves inputting of both trust fund and affordable housing units, information into a system that the state just released on September 6th. Who laughed? So I want to tell you that these deadlines, and I am waiting every day for there to be an extension of this deadline. And thus far, it hasn't happened. So we're all moving forward with that. So my point, when I say there hasn't been extensions. So that hasn't happened yet. So fortunately, I don't have access to it. I have an employee who does. So I can't be, I can't be the one who's, who's the one who crashes that. But my point being, these dates are, that's why, that's why we're having this discussion now. We're not waiting till there's an obligation. We're not waiting till there's a binding resolution. And we're certainly not waiting till we're at a housing element date. This needs to be talked about and make sure everyone is aware of this now. So as the mayor indicated, the affordable housing process happens in rounds. We had rounds one and two, which are quite often combined and referred to as prior round. We're right now in rounds three. And then, of course, round four is what's supposed to be starting in 2025. Ideally, we'll be getting our obligation in just a few weeks. The present need is also quite often referred to as a rehabilitation need. Under round three, your rehabilitation need was 24 units. Your prior round obligation was 45. Your round three obligation was 218. And your round four obligation is TBD, we don't know. I'm going to get into the RDP and unmet need later. So someone might say, wow, our obligation really went up from rounds, you know, prior round to round three. Yes, it did. But also, round three, there were some challenges with COA. Round three was supposed to start in 1999. At that time, if I recall correctly, there were not COA, COA didn't, wasn't out with its new rules yet. Then, early 2000s, it came out with rules known as growth share. Those were overturned, first in 2008, I believe, and then again in 2010. Regardless, they were overturned twice. In 2014, COA attempted to adopt another set of round three rules. There was not actually enough individuals appointed to the council at the time. And that vote ended in a tie. So those rules were not, were not adopted. And then, a year later, in 2015, we had the Mount Laurel Four case in March of 2015, where affordable housing responsibilities were removed from COA and returned to the courts. And as the mayor indicated, we have been in a court or litigation process since that time until this legislation was adopted this year. So the calculation of the prospective obligation, your affordable housing obligation. This is a regional process. I want everyone, I hope everyone who is here tonight understands this is a regional process. COA and affordable housing, COA, not COA, it's all done by region. Your obligation is not done on an individualized Fanwood basis. In other words, somebody from DCA is not going to come to Fanwood, look at your vacant land, look at how many housing units, et cetera, and say, okay, Fanwood, your obligation is A. And Scotch Plains, your obligation is B. And Caldwell and West Caldwell, your obligations are C and D. And Plainfield, you're E. And then A plus B plus C plus D equals the regional obligation. That's backwards. It starts, the affordable housing process starts with the region. So the obligation is established at the regional level and filters down. We'll talk a little bit about how it filters down. So quite often, or at least with the round three obligations, I would have a town say to me, Caroline, it's like they don't even know my town. And you're right. It's like they don't even know your town. So that, this is just to show the counties and the regions. So the first step is to, it's a mathematical step for looking at the regions. And my point in going through the obligation and how it's calculated is not so we can all leave here and know how it's done. It's so that everyone can understand that it's highly complicated, it's a highly complicated analysis from the regional level down to the municipal level. So the regional need is broken down to the municipal share by three factors. Equalized non-residential valuation, that's tax assessment information. Income capacity, that's census information. And then, number three, land capacity. And we're going to talk about that a little bit. That's vacant land and available land. So very quickly, the equalized non-residential valuation, you look at the change in non-residential property. There's calculations. And then, there's these analyses done. Income capacity, similarly, there's, you calculate your income difference. You weigh it by household. You average it. There's another calculation done. Land capacity, I'd like to talk about that for a minute. Land capacity is, in my mind, the big, the big unknown. So it's an estimate of developable land in your municipality. There's weighting factors depending upon what planning area you're in in the state plan. And anyone who's not familiar with the state plan, that's a 2001 document that is presently, a draft is going to be released of that soon, although I don't actually have a date. There's been a couple of dates we were told and it hasn't materialized. Then you divide, you know, you did, there's still more analyses that are done. But to me, the land capacity factor is so important. And there are, there are a few reasons. First of all, factor one and two have to do with census data and tax assessment data. Those are facts. Those can be checked. The land capacity, that is mapping. And under the round three rules that were overturned previously, there were some analyses done, some vacant land looked at based on, I believe, DEP mapping. And I can personally tell you that there were areas that were identified as vacant and available that were the Garden State Parkway, grassy medians, cemeteries, and other similar, other similar areas. So when I say land capacity is important, I think it's very important. And that's one of the things we've been looking at, is the vacant land. And it's also going to be important again as we go through the process of how do we meet our obligation. And we'll see why. And there's just some, one of the DEP maps that will be looked at. So the, these three factors are averaged together and multiplied by regional need, and then broken down to a municipal obligation. So that is the obligation that DCA is calculating and again, is supposed to be out in a few weeks. So I know Fanwood, like many other towns, is a town that doesn't have many, or I didn't, depending upon who you speak to, much or any available vacant land that is developable. This is what one might call a built-out or close-to-built-out town. So what happens in a town like that? So if you remember, in a slide, a couple of slides ago, we taught that referenced the different rounds. There was something called an RDP. And I said, we'll get back to the RDP. So there is a vacant land adjustment process. And that is a process that has been throughout the COA rules. It has carried forward with some changes into this round four legislation. And it is a, it is a process that towns like Fanwood go through when there is a recognition that you can, you are not able to build or to zone for your full obligation. And Fanwood was what was called a vacant land town. It received a vacant land adjustment previously. It would not surprise me that towns that had once previously received a vacant land adjustment would do so again going forward. And that would be the approach. Again, we will have to see what our obligation is. With the vacant land, there is a process that you go through to develop what is called a realistic development potential. That's the RDP. That is a number that is calculated in the past under COA rules. It was calculated by a very specific formula. Your vacant land was looked at, it was then, anything that was an environmental constraint was excluded. What was left, either full lot or portion thereof, was multiplied by a factor contained, a density contained in the COA rules. Quite often in this area, it was six units to an acre, there was a resulting number, an RDP. The remainder of your obligation doesn't go away, it would become what is called unmet need. So if your total obligation is, is one number, you have a portion of it that's the RDP, that your fair share plan seeks to meet specifically, unit for unit, then the remainder was what was called, what is called unmet need. And for that, you have, the town has to provide an opportunity, typically via overlay zoning, to address its unmet need. So this slide talks about a land that could or could not be included in the vacant land adjustment.
What is overlay zoning?
I'll, I will get to that, but I, may I do it at the end?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Again, what is.
Hard to process the information.
So, and my apologies, because I've been doing this a lot of years, and right now, I'm spending a lot of time on this, so things like overlay zoning come out of my map, and I think the whole world knows what I'm talking about. And the mayor did indicate terms that might seem a little, not as familiar, so thank you for letting, thank you for that. And please remind me, if I don't speak about it, remind me. So these are properties you can exclude from the vacant land, active recreation, environmentally constrained properties, properties on the state or national register of historic places, place, excuse me. So the difference is now, however, as I indicated, when we would calculate a vacant land adjustment, COA rules had specific densities to utilize in your calculation. Now, the legislation calls for a density to be known as appropriate standards. So, one of the things we're going to be looking at is, in Fanwood, what's an appropriate standard, what's an appropriate density for certain areas. But that's a big change in my mind. In addition, with the unmet need, we were able to satisfy via overlay zoning, which we'll define later and explain later. It didn't, your unmet need did not necessarily need to be addressed on a one-for-one basis. It just, you needed to provide zoning opportunities in general that would, were sufficient to meet the unmet need. And quite often, in the litigation and process with the courts, it might be subjected, it was part of your whole cinema package. Now, the first 25% of your unmet need must, must be addressed by a site-specific, site-specific zoning with, as, with certain, certain locations identified. That is a change, I think that's a very important change for vacant land towns like Fanwood. The new, what's important is that the new legislation does permit any adjustments or any other crediting that's, that have been adopted by the council or in your judgment or proposed through the courts. It allows us to stay, and it also, it allows basically anything from the prior COA rules, unless there's something in the new legislation that contradicts or removes it. So, what do we do? How do we meet our, like, what kind of developments, how is an affordable housing obligation met? So the first type of project that's listed is inclusionary. And I know you have some inclusionary developments in town, in your, in your downtown area. Inclusionary means there is a mix of units, both market rate, which are those units that are open to anybody without any type of income restriction, and affordable units. Those types of developments will have what's called an affordable set aside, typically 15 or 20%. A 100% affordable, that's exactly what it sounds like. Quite often, that is a municipally sponsored project, sometimes the municipality will work with a developer or a nonprofit in order to achieve this type of 100% affordable development. An age-restricted development, which I had earlier referred to as senior units, but that is a development that is restricted by age, and there is a limitation of the number of affordable, age-restricted, or senior units that a town can take credit for in its plan. Special needs, for sale units, rental units, there are minimum requirements, you must have a certain number of rental units. You must have a certain number of what is known as family units. Family is a bit of a misnomer, in my opinion, it basically means there's no restrictions. So a family unit may not be there, is not a senior unit, it is not a special needs unit, or a group home, or a unit, or a supportive housing unit, it is basically a unit with no restrictions. Supportive housing is, is a type, is very similar to special needs. Veterans preference housing, there is an opportunity to include that in your plan. Transitional housing, and then et cetera, because basically, there's always, there's always other new ideas. Bonus credits. Bonus credits are an important part of, of how to achieve and how to meet your obligation. Under COA rules and continued forward in the legislation, a municipality may, may meet 25% of its obligation via bonus credits. And Fanwood did that, most towns did that. There's a restriction on the number of age-restricted or senior units for which you can take bonus credits for. So there is a restriction on the total number of age-restricted or senior units, and then there's a further restriction on the number of bonus credits for age-restricted or senior units. So while it is very, while it's favorable that the legislation increased the percentage of permitted senior or age-restricted units for which a town could take credit, it's restricted for the bonuses, so while I haven't done the numbers, I'm a little curious to see if it's going to end up being a wash, so to speak. The rental bonus credit is one, is what I feel is professional, is one of the biggest challenges, is the removal of that. Under COA rules, there was what was known as a rental bonus credit. And because every town has, has, did have, and continues to have, a rental obligation, there were always rental units or committed rental units in your plan. Therefore, the ability to obtain a rental bonus came almost naturally. And every plan I worked on that had bonus credits, had rental bonus credits. Unfortunately, those are no longer available. So, we have to look at what is and work with those. There is one bonus credit, in other words, if you have a, and I'm making this up, six units of affordable housing, and then they could all be eligible for six bonus credits for very specific types of housing. Supportive housing, special needs, market-to-affordable, which I don't actually believe is that applicable to Fanwood, that involves taking a, a typical market house, the town would buy the house with its trust fund dollars, if it has enough, and then convert it into affordable housing. So while you would get bonus credits for it, in a town where the housing values are quite high, it's not that easy to achieve. And the town is also spending a lot of its trust fund to purchase a house where it's only going to potentially get a couple of units of credit. It's, 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 it's not really, I don't see it much in this area. And units in a municipally sponsored 100% affordable housing development, that's assuming that the town also participates in some manner. Quite often, that participation involves the donation of property. There are also half, one-half units of bonus credit available. If there's a partnership with a nonprofit, if you, if the, the units are located within half-mile of a bus, rail, light rail, a ferry, ferry station, of course, we have the train station in town. Age-restricted units, as I indicated, those have their own limitations. Three-bedroom units above the minimum requirement. With affordable housing, there is a series of, another, a different series of rules that requires a certain number of one, two, and three-bedroom affordable units. There's formulas of how many one-bedroom units may be included, and how many two- and three-bedroom units must be included. What this is saying is, if the development exceeds the required number of three-bedroom units, then those units would be eligible for this one-half bonus credit. Redevelopment of retail, office, or commercial space, we are seeing that, you know, in certain areas, the office market is quite challenged, and this, some of this may happen. I'm questioning how applicable that is here, but that is an option, an opportunity. Extension of affordability controls, that means if the D restriction has ended or is about to end, it could be extended, and therefore, there could be potential bonus credits. Very low incomes of units above the minimum requirement. There are also, there is another series of requirements with respect to affordable housing, and whether they are affordable to the low, moderate, or very low-income households. It is required that, within affordable housing, 13% of a municipality's affordable units must be affordable to the very low-income household population. So, if there is an extra unit above what is required within that 13%, that unit would then be available for a bonus credit. Finally, as the mayor indicated, there is a dispute resolution program. This was funded through the legislation, it is supposed to be the process through which disputes are handled. If you recall, I indicated there could be a challenge to your, to a municipality's obligation or to its plan, and supposed these challenges are supposed to be resolved through this process, rendering determinations. It is supposed to facilitate communication between municipalities and all interested parties. I do believe there's going to be a series of retired judges who are going to be called back to run and participate in this process. So next steps. So, as the mayor indicated, Fanwood is always recognized and been responsible and been forward-thinking with respect to the affordable housing obligations. And to that end, it's also doing all the right things and starting, you know, ahead of the game now as well. First of all, we're here tonight, and I think that's really important, even though the room is a little sparse, it's very important, we are videoing, anyone can watch this, but this is, the round four affordable housing arena is done through, handled through this legislation, this legislative process. It, the legislation set forth specific requirements and dictated how the obligations would be handled, would be addressed, and amended the Fair Housing Act. This is all, so therefore, that allows the town to have open meetings and open discussions like this. Under round three, the process was handled through litigation, there was not this type of opportunity to have as open discussions due to the, due to the litigation and that process. We've already had meetings and discussions for, I believe, since the legislation was adopted, the mayor and I and others have had part of our committee, we've had discussions, we've started, we've started, we are very well through your analysis of vacant land, again, for two purposes, one, to look at the obligation and the land capacity factor, and two, for consideration of the vacant land adjustment and that process with respect to the obligation. We, we are looking at your density characteristics and other, other matters, other development characteristics throughout the town, so that we are prepared, because the obligations are going to be released soon, within the next pretty much four to five weeks, and then, as you saw in my timetable, we need to move quickly in order to meet all the deadlines, because it's so important for the town to, to remain unchallenged, to stay on track, and just to move forward in the manner that it always has with respect to addressing its affordable housing obligation. It's a lot. It's, it's a lot, and I've been dealing with it for close, close to the 20 years that I've been here, and I still take it in, I still have to listen intently, I still have to remember what the acronyms are for. And I still know that, you know, we are given right things to, we are mandated to provide. So, I'm going to open this up to questions. And I think the easiest way to do this, if you can just, just come forward, because we have a microphone, and so we can get picked up for there. And it really, if it's statements, if it's questions that you have, I mean, you know, we've kind of gone through our, our presentation, and so I have my staff here and our professionals, and we'd be more than willing to just have just a conversation, or even if you have a thought-provoking comment on something that you see. So you want to come forward and just state your name for the record?
Not shy. Henry Lominski, did you address my question about the.
Sure.
Two, two questions, so that's the first one. You owe me that.
I, you're right, thank you for reminding me, although I, I did, I did remember. But so, what is overlay zoning? So, actually, I'm going to, just give me one second. Can we have one here? You do, in your, in your CC zone. Yeah, so. The multiple CC zones. I'm trying to get to here, here we go. So this was, this was a slide that I showed, so just, if you'll be patient with me, the, there's, if you look at round, the two center columns, round one and two, prior round, and round three, so there's a total obligation, for example, round three, a total obligation of 218 units. Your RDP, the realistic development potential, which is what is calculated through the vacant land process, was 36 units. Your unmet need is 182 units, and that's mathematical. Your total obligation minus your RDP equals the unmet need. So, and I know this is a long way to answer your question, but I'm just trying to distinguish. So the RDP needs to be met with very specific zoning or very specific projects. For example, you know, One John Street will have six units, there's an agreement for that, or it's built already, very specific units, so that you come up with 36. The difference, the unmet need can be handled by this overlay zoning, where an overlay zoning permits the type of development, the inclusionary development, which is both market rate and, and affordable units, with the, with the affordable set aside. But it also might permit what else is already there. In other words, if you have the, like, the commercial zone, the retail, office, et cetera, it allows as an option in this area that is overlaid, the overlay zoning in this certain area. And in, in Fanwood, it's the CC zones.
Commercial corridor.
You have the commercial corridor, corridor. So.
Basically, South Avenue.
Yeah, South Avenue. So it's not that the only thing that is permitted is this one type of development, but what is permitted is what the underlying zone does, as well as what's overlaid via the overlay zoning on top of South Avenue, the CC.
And let me just, and Diane, keep me honest here, and I believe that, that the idea of having to do an overlay zone came directly out of.
Correct.
Our.
Round three.
Our round three, which we had to give to the courts, right? So we had to, remember, we got taken out of the administrative process, they gave it to the courts, because they wouldn't put enough people onto COA, they couldn't meet, right? So they sent it to the courts, and now, we have to come up with our fair share plan.
Right.
And that plan on how we were going to meet, we were required to show, and that we had to then create. And an overlay zone that we did at the planning board, and then back up to the council to memorialize it happened. So we have an overlay zone that will allow where development naturally can occur for us to try to achieve the numbers.
So mayor, can I just maybe add to that? So in the overlay zone, where they allow for three-story or three-and-a-half-story, depending on if you're CC West, or CC East, or four-story down by the train, Lightbridge Academy became a preschool adaptive reuse into a, into a preschool learning center, because that's allowed in the zoning. And then, you know, across the street, multifamily housing was done with Forty South, which has market rate residential units and affordable housing. So the, the zoning allows for both, in some cases, you might not have housing, you may have Lightbridge Academy, but in some cases, you can in that whole. But in some cases, you can, in that whole CC corridor, move forward with something that includes the affordable housing. We had to put the potential there that if someone wanted to do it, they could.
Make it easier for a developer to come in, to be able to provide affordable housing.
I, I think I got it. Still, second question might be overly simplistic. Where are we right now with hitting the target for our units? And are we close? Sixty percent?
No, we're good.
Good. So we're just waiting to.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's something that I, I, it's not, it's a really good question because we hadn't really talked about how the numbers and what they translated into. But we've been able to meet our obligation in a variety of ways. And as you, as Caroline talked about, different things are allowed other than the inclusionary, which is sort of an arpiece mixed use, right? So most people don't really realize how many group homes that Fanwood has historically had here. And so those group homes actually count towards our affordable housing numbers because you're dealing with people with disabilities and therefore we get credit for that.
Yes, sir.
And a bonus credit. So that was really good for us to be able to start to draw down. And then we met our obligation through affordable housing units that were built in inclusionary ways. So I think overall, Diane, right?
Oh, good.
We've met our first, second, and third round, except for one unit?
Yes.
Yeah, so we've met first, second, third round. We're good.
Your RDP, you've satisfied your RDP.
Yes, we've satisfied.
Those numbers that are up there, the RDP numbers, that is my understanding has been satisfied.
Well, that's good news.
That's, that's.
It is good news.
That is very, very good news. You're correct. Thank you.
And not everybody's in this position, I have to tell you.
I, I read the papers, I've seen.
Anybody else? Yes. Can state your name for the record?
Caroline, I already mentioned the deed restriction. Aren't these units in any way limited in the life of time in their lifespan?
Yes, that's a great, that's another great question.
Thank you.
So affordable, so affordable units under current rules need, need to be deed restricted for thirty years. They will be affordable for thirty years. One of the things in the legislation is to increase that to forty years. We'll see if that materializes or not. That's another new set of rules that needs to be adopted. But yes, the deed restriction. And so what, that, that gives, that, the reason for that is also so that the affordable units happen and they're protected. Because thirty years is a long time. And, and especially if a household, you know, moves out, then the deed restriction is on the unit so that only a very specific household with a very specific A number of people and B income can move in. And that process is all handled. There's, there's a way that the affordable units are, they have to be marketed so that everybody is aware of them. There's a lottery system and then there is income eligibility done. There is a process with this. But the deed restriction is a very important component of it. It, it's basically what ensures that the units remain affordable for the time period that they're supposed to.
Gary Morris. I actually said this as a joke one time at a meeting in Scotch Plains, but I'd love to hear your answer to this because they didn't have anybody really qualified at the time to answer the question. Tell me why my adult child living at home doesn't count as affordable housing? The dude's not paying rent, okay? I want to know how it could get any more affordable than living for free in my house. We're done now with, with any obligations we'll ever have. If you counted every adult child, how many? You have adult children, right? Think about it. And it, it really.
So would you like to, would you take in a stranger?
I actually have somebody living at our house also, believe it or not. He's not a stranger. And he's, he's saving money to, to get married in January and I'm cutting a break. He heard, he, he, he got kicked out of where he was living because somebody got, his roommate got married. And I'm like, you know what? I have a room, come on in. So I, I've done it before. So why does that not actually count? If I like filled out paperwork and said, hey, I got somebody living at my house who should be on their own and could be on their own, but they can't afford it right now. So I'm letting this adult person live in my home?
It's a law school question.
What's that?
I said it's a law school question that.
It is really, it's an interesting.
If this, if this is a serious question, I can answer it. I actually, I actually thought you were joking.
I'm, I'm giving this a joke one time. I started thinking about it, why not?
So I have adult children too, including one for whom I'm paying tuition and rent. So I can appreciate the question.
Exactly.
So, but you're actually going about, the question that you raise is raising some interesting points. First of all, A, your unit needs to be deed restricted as an affordable unit. I'm betting it isn't. B, your unit has to be affirmatively marketed. That means that someone, an entity that the town hires, needs to market your house as being available for affordable units throughout the region as well as via your settlement agreement, which I would like to look at, but you can see my plan is sort of following pieces here. But your settlement agreement will require other housing, other advertising through houses of worship, et cetera. And C, you cannot dictate who would be the, who would be living in your house. It would be an open lottery to all income qualified households. So therefore, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not someone like that, for sure. But, but really.
But I, but, so I appreciate the simplicity of the question, but these are all promulgated rules that came out of a basic nineteen seventy-five lawsuit challenging people who are having trouble living in communities, they were shut out, right? And that's the, sort of the basis of the obligation the town has, the town has to provide realistic opportunity. And they, and as you can see, it's been a twisted road of how that's defined and how that's enforced and what's the mechanism and what's our obligation numbers, right? And what my obligation is and who doesn't, you know, if they're an urban center, you know, because they already have the idea, a ton of affordable controls in place with rent limits. They don't necessarily have an obligation, you know, so, yeah. I hope that.
But it, but if you really think about it, if like a person that did stay with me for six months, again, he was literally, it was either that or living in his car. And I said, it was a family friend and here you can do something good and it could help the town by, by. We're not going to let somebody, a complete stranger off the street just live with us.
You're doing a good thing.
No, I'm, I know. I just don't, I'd like it to count for something with, with it's affordable housing.
I think it just counts in the corner of the world. You're doing a good thing.
So anyway.
And I would just tell you that you touched upon what really is another real issue in the country. And, you know, sometimes people just want to gloss over it is there's a serious lack of housing and there's a serious lack of affordable housing options. And that is what's driving. How New Jersey handles it is different than New York handles it. It's different than Nevada handles it. But overall, we know in this country that there is a housing shortage and that there's an affordable housing shortage with that. And so that is also something that we should kind of keep in mind here. And the other piece that I would kind of share is that there are mechanisms in place that we can meet some of our needs through what they call rehabilitative process where, and we've tried this in the past here in Fanwood, is that if we had residents that came forward, and keep me honest here with this.
You're doing great.
That they came forward and if they met guidelines and they owned their home and they had to basically kind of share with us some financial data, that we would be able to use what we call our affordable housing trust fund, which at a time, there was an option that instead of building the affordable housing unit on site of a development, they could give us money and we could put that into a trust fund to help meet our need in some other ways. We did that for a little while. We had some money. We're a small town, don't have a lot of, of, you know, trust fund. But we did take that money and we did market it out there to try to find our residents, our seniors, maybe not our seniors, that literally were having trouble. Couldn't replace the windows, needed new siding, you know, a boiler, anything like that. And that was a way that we could meet part of our obligation. And I believe in this next round, the rehabilitation rehab is still permitted.
Right, so actually you have, so there is a rehabilitation, a present, a present need. I do think it's, you had something with your settlement agreement that allowed for what you've just described to happen. But part of the affordable housing obligation is the present need or the rehabilitation need for which there's twenty-four units. The mayor said, keep her honest. She gave a great description, except that it's not, this is, the rehabilitation is not only for homeowners. It is also for rental units as long as they meet the income guidelines. And I'm fairly certain that the borough participates or is, is, is operating such a program or if it isn't, it will be soon. I would anticipate that there will be a round for rehabilitation obligation as well as the prospective need as well as the affordable housing obligation. So there is, it's, there is, there's both that's a component.
And we have met some.
You met some.
We have, oh yeah.
All right.
Is there, is there a way in some of these developments to steer towards like the AMP one? Can we put a preschool in there instead of another restaurant? Or something like that to help the school situation in our town? Because we're at a tipping point where we got to spend a lot of money or figure something else out. Is there some way to manage working that into developments?
In our community at least, you know, for a small community, we have three facilities that provide, I think, the pre-K. And I even think God's School provides kindergarten. So we have, for a small school, we've got three actual facilities there. Education, I think is a permitted use. I think, you know, that's a permitted use anywhere. But like anything else, right? These are private properties and people, we, we don't really dictate. We can say, hey, right? Like we can try to have a conversation. But at the, but at the, at the end of the day, these are private property owners that because they need something or that they're in an overlay zone or we have an obligation, that we get to the table and we try to figure out how we can do a development in this town that does not really change the character as much as humanly possible of this community. And I would tell you that I have always felt with the pressures of the affordable housing on us and balancing that while also understanding that we did not have what I would consider a thriving downtown where people could eat and they could work and they could live. Nobody lived downtown twenty-five years ago. And, and keep our property values strong. Don't let the development creep into where it doesn't belong. So that's why our side streets and our neighborhoods are still what they are today and they will remain that way. They are single family homes. They are fifty by seventy-five. They're a hundred and fifty by a hundred yards in, in the, the size of the properties. You know, years ago, when we had those McMansions starting to creep in, we went right on that and we put in real constraints. We've tried our hardest to always make sure that this town remains exactly what it is, you know, which people have come here and love, but also capture this investment of being on a train line. Because people have captured it all along and it has helped us in a lot of different ways. So it's been a balancing act. It's not easy because we don't have a lot of choice, as you can see in, in these formulas. But I want you to, you know, really appreciate that we try to be as transparent as possible. And it's not lost on me, these sort of very high level conversations that are going on with density and affordable housing across New Jersey and rentals and, and what people are really upset about. And some listen, some don't listen. Some municipalities aren't as open and transparent as they probably should be. But we do what the best that we can do here, given what we can control in our little mile or so square town. Thank you, Gary. Just wondering if anybody else wants to.
One, one last thing. Do you know how big that school's going to be now? How many, how many students are it?
No. I mean, I only know what was told to me, which I think was around five hundred.
It's seven twenty now. This is really getting out of control. Somebody needs to do something. That was as of, as of September night. Please, please, please get involved.
Okay, thank you.
I was forty-one to chairman. Please help me. Number one, back in January, we were doing land use master plan. How does that fit into all the lists?
Our master plan.
Great, that's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up. You're correct in that the borough had started the master plan process and were very involved in it. I did have a public information session where we talked about it, very engaged group. And we are still working on that and working with the subcommittee. But what has happened is this legis, honestly, this legislation and the affordable housing process was put in front of us earlier than anyone had expected due, due to the legislation. And because of, because there's an inter, there's a, they're intertwined somewhat and there's a relationship.
And I'm trying to understand.
With the housing.
The housing, with the housing element. The housing element is part of the master plan. So if there's any studies of affordable housing, well, let me rephrase that. Because the housing element will contain studies of density and development characteristics, it is, it is related to the land use plan. It is another component or part of the master plan. So therefore, the, therefore, this, this introduction of affordable housing has, is, it needs to be addressed in conjunction with the entire master plan because it's a relationship. I'm sorry.
We don't have that in place yet.
No, the new master plan has not been adopted. That's correct.
So we're going to hold this and.
Sure, sure. So let me, let me, let me see if I can just. So we happened to start the master plan reexam because it was due, it was overdue. To Carolyn's point, with the introduction of the legislation, which we didn't necessarily see coming, right? We kind of heard about it and how fast this moved and everything came out of it. We chose to pause on the master plan because it has a housing element contained in it to then make sure that whatever comes out and whatever we have to do, that we don't have to go back, hire another consultant, opening up our master plan, revise our housing element plan in it. We chose to kind of put the brakes on it. And then once we get our handle on this, if you've seen the timeline, once that starts, within three months, I mean, we'll, we'll either say, yeah, we agreed that number, no, we don't agree with that number, this is why, and then see if it's going to get challenged and then do our master plan updates.
Have a girl over the deadline for this is January thirty-first?
That's correct. January, so that's the first really important deadline is January thirty-first. The mayor and council, the governing body is going to say what it's, it's going to stipulate what its affordable housing obligation is. The housing, the housing element, right? The planning board, that's the planning board's role. The housing element deadline is June, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Adoption by June thirtieth.
Help me understand again how to come up with it because again, we were talking about this starts from the top down, that some of this is some sort of regional obligation.
It is a regional, yep. That's correct.
That's actually correct.
That's, yeah. So, so if you take it a step back, this, the, there, there will be a number that will be put out that will talk about the number of units that need to be created in the state of New Jersey to create realistic affordable housing needs. And that number will get broken down into regions And that number will get broken down into regions with a formula that she kind of went through, right? Our regions, you know, made up of.
Um, what is it, that, that?
Right. Oh, that's okay, we can make this presentation, you know, we can put this up on our website, we'll figure out where we do it so you can get, you know, because it's, it's good to have actually the hard copy, if you're really interested in this, to see, to see this, and we'll make sure we do it. So they take that big state number, they break that number down into regions, we are part of a region, and that's what we're really waiting on, is to see the total number, the region number, and then how they get to our little town number. And that's where it's from the top down, not from the bottom up.
I can cover it a little more.
I know.
Last question. This doesn't take, Fair Share Housing Corporation totally out of the equation, though, they can still, and I can.
It's a great question.
Yeah, yeah. That's a great question. They get their moment, and stuff.
That's, that's a great question. So the Fair Share Housing Center, is I believe what you're referencing. So the Fair Share Housing Center is a nonprofit that has been involved in the affordable housing arena, and COA, and the courts, et cetera, I believe, since, if not the first not-moral decision shortly thereafter. And the Fair Share Housing Center is the group with which Fanwood and every other municipality that settled under round three had to go into a settlement agreement in court with Fair Share Housing Center. They were what was called an interested party under round three. So I, I would not be surprised if they appear again as interested parties under round four.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? Well, I really have to say thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for seeing us promote this, and whatever interest you had that brought you here into this room tonight to listen to this, I really appreciate it, because I know as the mayor in a community, we do so well together when we talk to one another, and when I feel that I can at least educate you, I always say, may not always agree on everything, but my goal is to always make sure at least you understand kind of what's going on in the town that you live in. So with that, I think we'll, you know, thank Carolyn for, I think, her presentation that kind of brought a lot of complicated, big ideas and distilled them down. We will make her presentation available, you know, the next day or two, if you want to just check back up on the website. Hang around for a few minutes if anybody has any additional comments, and this will be posted up, also be shown on our public access station. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to say thank, thank you for the support, thank you for having me come out here. And also, I was remiss, I meant to at the beginning, thank also Jessie, and Diane, and Liz for all their help, and of course, Pam for making today happen legislatively. So thank you all.